I think everybody is here, so let's go ahead and get started.
Okay.
First of all, I want to thank Shoshana for being here and Shane, thank you for coming down from Denver, appreciate it. Today is Tuesday, February, Monday, February the 27th, time is now 3:00 PM. The work session in the City Council, the City of Trinidad will not be ordered. We have a couple of items that we're going to discuss today, and the first one is going to be a discussion with the Executive Director, Shoshana Lou, and the second item is going to be our fourth quarter marijuana sales, sales tax allocation.
Recording in progress.
What's interesting about today, bringing Shoshana here, is Trinidad is in a very unique location. We're 100 miles away from two large metro areas, Albuquerque and Denver. So it places Trinidad in a very unique place for us to be. If you travel 200 miles right away, you need a place to stop off. You know Trinidad right now is in revitalization mode, a lot of things have happened over the last several years, and we need them to continue. And to make that continue, we need to have transportation to be correctly placed, I guess you could say, so that people have a reason to stop off when they're passing through, whether they're going north or south, or east or west, it doesn't make any difference. But we have two very distinct points, and that's one going north and one going south. That's where the heavier traffic is. So what we're going to do is, let's go around the room and introduce who's here. So let's start off over here.
Hi, I'm Shane Ferguson, I'm the new Region Two Director for CDOT.
I'm Shoshana Lou, I'm the Executive Director of CDOT.
Frank Shute, Councilman.
Eli DeBono, Council.
Nathan Durman, Council.
Karen Greco, Council.
Aaron Williamson, Council.
Aaron Noble, City Mayor of Port town.
Si Michaels, Business Owner and part of the Downtown Development Group.
Jay Chiumino, Philong Enterprises CEO.
Operations Manager for Philong Enterprises.
Jeremy Graham, Southern Colorado Creative Director.
Jerry Graham, I'm just here as a server, see my son.
Hi, Kyle Henson, Architect with Kip Hamden Group.
Gina Chiumino, Kip Hamden Property.
Rory Chiumino, D.P. Insurance.
And I think Jay was saying you're going to introduce your group, one of you.
I think Gina might, but you're in the middle one.
Okay, well, we'll just continue on then.
Sal Pace with Kip Hamden.
Dave Backratt, Fire Department.
Carl Gabriel, Trinidad Development Group.
Lou Subliman, the Trinidad Community Foundation.
Bart Bachmann, Resident and Business Owner.
Amanda Bass, at Sal Pace's office.
And Steve Bruegger, City Manager.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and kick this off. Somebody else over here, yes?
Sorry.
Audrey Garrett, State Clerk.
Kim Miltas, Assistant State Clerk.
Today's discussion is pretty much about transportation coming through Trinidad and the on and off ramps, and what is uniquely best, and so I want to keep that discussion today strictly to the transportation portion of this. And of course, I'm sure Shoshana, you might have some questions as we go along, but let's start off, I'm not sure how well you guys can see this here, but this is a proposal that I know Jay worked on, him and his group, and Shoshana, this is probably of interest to you, is, you know, we've been talking about this Exit 14. And Exit 14, to be honest with you, is just an ugly ingress into Trinidad. So we need to try to do something to beautify it and make it more accessible so that travelers coming through have easy access, you know, coming through Trinidad, into Trinidad, and then as they exit Trinidad as well. So what we have here, as we come, in the right direction, Exit 14 here, one of the things that's of interest is the new ramp, which is what the City Council has said that is going to be their, one thing that we want to make sure that we get that going, and from what I understand, there's supposed to be some design work happening, or going to happen here shortly. So that's going to come off, and it'll come off right here, this is the current access, and this is right here, this is Colorado Avenue here. What happens is, instead of continuing straight forth the way it is in the five-point intersection, we want to convert that into a four-point intersection. But what will happen is, it'll come off of the exit and go behind the Bowles Texaco Station and the Haydad Motor Building, and what it would do is, it would go back down and intercept there with Commercial Street, which then goes all the way through here. So then, the proposal was, and this is something that Jay's group, Kim McWith, is as if they come off here, there's a section, I'll bring this up in a second, is that there's a small road here that goes across, and it comes around, and you can have either come all the way down and go straight through, all the way through over here on Main Street, and all the way through into Exit I-25. And coming from the south, it would be the same thing. There's a second possibility that if that does not work, well, they could still go over here on Pine Street and then go down, but either way, I think, would work. So that is the proposal that we're looking at, and just uniquely, like I said, just the beautification of that entry point down here. And this is here, we'll bring this up, this is a rendering of what, a couple of renderings that we have. As you come off of that Five Points area on that Exit 14, there's that area, in other words, this is the new ramp going south, and right off Highway 14, it's a proposal to put something like this as you come into Trinidad.
Do you want me to carry it around just a minute?
You can, and that way they can see what that visibility would look like, how that would. It would really enhance that entry point into town. And so that's, as you come in, it would just be a beautiful piece of something, we could do something like this. And then I talked about that little small access point as you came across, this little short piece right here that we're talking about as you come off right here, it's a, right now, it's a single one-way street, and the proposal there would be something like this. Now, like I said, it's kind of black and white, so it's kind of hard for you to see, but something like this is what we would propose to do as the entryway to come in. I think it's, this is the IVR U-Paw Building right now, and it's pretty tight in here, it's only for a single car. I don't know how much room there is on this side here, but if we could do something to either purchase that, I'm not sure, we don't know who owns the property, and expand that maybe into a two-way zone.
So what street is that?
Is that?
What, what street is?
That's called Broome Street.
Broome Street.
Called Broome Street. Did I kind of get you in the right direction?
Yeah.
So that's the Barney's.
Yes, this is Barney's Garage.
A little bit of that direction there.
Put something like, say, it's like that as an entry point into town.
Broome Street, you said, I'm just putting it in the?
It's just north of the on-ramp to South Base.
There we go.
I think you guys have seen it.
Yep.
I already, you guys, this is what it looks like.
What intersection?
Commercial and Broome.
Mary, can you show it to the people on the camera? Sure, anybody who is watching, this is what it's going to look like. This is the rendering onto Broome Street, and this is the rendering of the overall throughway map through Trinidad, from either direction, north or south.
So where does it, so this is Commercial and this is Broome, where do they intersect?
It's nice to have maps on us all the time these days.
Right, right, right.
Shoshana, this is probably the easiest way to see.
Oh, well, we have an actual map.
Yeah, yeah. So currently, let me make sure, the Five Points is here, so as you're coming down I-25, it kind of comes across and comes into Five Points. So the proposal, and I think you've discussed it, parallels the highway, terminates into Commercial, this is Broome, so it's right at that exit, comes down on...
That is Broome Street and Pine Street.
Pine, this is, yeah, Pine and Arizona?
Yeah.
I think it's Arizona. Then this is the CDOT parking lot that's underneath?
There's 140 parking spaces there, and additional 35 here, and additional 40 over there.
That we run.
Yep.
Well, they're, yeah, they're all yours, yeah.
So what we're trying to do, and we'll discuss this just a little bit, is how do you get people from 14, Experience Trinidad, get to, right now, the fast food and fueling has been kind of marooned on this part of the freeway way. So how do you direct the traffic? So here we have electric chargers, so you'd come off, you have the chargers right, right at that station, but if you're gas, you can come right through, here's to the fueling stations. How do you get to Highway of Legends, you know, going to 12, you know, here?
So you're trying to make this space essentially?
Use, yeah, utilize that.
Because it's in the center of our city.
It's a big investment.
That's where the parking is.
Yeah, all the parking.
Just trying to understand exactly.
And EV parking stations, and, you know.
Here's the other thing we want to mention, is that you're talking about EV charging stations, like I said, they have a proposal here, but at the same time, we have two possibilities. One would be this area here, and like I said, that property right now, we're in negotiations right now to see if that can happen. And we could either put the charging stations in here as they come off, same thing here, and the other place that could happen would be on this south end, as you come off of the interstate on this end, because we own this property in here, so we'd have two areas of charging stations accessible to people coming through with EV vehicles.
You'd access off of Commercial, is that correct?
Yeah, so, yeah, so you'd exit the freeway, you'd hit Commercial, you'd come through, there's all the parking areas, continue down, here's fast food, fueling, continue, continue this way, takes you to Highway 12, right here, takes you to the college.
College, that's the big part, too.
This section right here is under redevelopment, in a kind of a partnership with the college to make this kind of a gathering space with restaurants and things for the college students. So it really invigorates this whole section of downtown.
Another thing, too, as I thought earlier, too, is as people come off here, depending as to how this purchase of this property works out down the road, is that, you know, this area here, we could maybe even deviate in here directly to charging stations as well. So there's poss, we have several different possibilities that we can work with as we move forward with this.
Okay, that's the first part, let's keep moving.
Mayor, if I may, if you all can kind of run that by the Council, too.
Sure.
So, well, we're going to really go through this, everybody's kind of got their thing to go through this, but as you did, so here is right where Five Points is currently at. Boulder Supplies here, Duran's Place is here, right in here. If the road, instead of the road currently goes like this, right to Colorado, right? Goes right to Colorado. Instead of doing that, it parallels right next to the road, where there actually was an old road on the flip side of this, of these buildings that are J&amp;J's, it's, there is an old part of the road that goes just directly that way. Broome Street comes right across, or to go into here, and then we would be able to utilize this and make it like a transportation center all the way through town. So downtown, we would be able to have EV charging stations, we'd be able to have bus tanks, we'd be able to have train, we'd be able to have Amtrak. I mean, the highway and the train kiss each other above each other, right over the highway, right under that spot. There's all these parking spaces that we don't utilize as a city so often, there's 140 of them. If we had any events, the buses, I know there's a flyer up in Denver that is running now to Boulder and back and forth, and just for future growth, this is a huge transportation area in the city of Trinidad that's underutilized, that is really one of the assets that CDOT gave us at one point, we just never know how to use it.
I think that that whole area coming off of Exit 14, that whole area right there, I think, is going to be something that can be utilized much better than is being utilized right now.
If you could imagine, you know, what the ideal would be to do with it, what would that be?
Right now, that Exit 14?
The area with the parking spaces.
It would be the greatest thing for a transportation center.
But what, what's your thought that we would do with it?
Right, well, we could use it for passengers getting on rail, passengers, people charging their station, they could be right in the middle of Commercial Street and Nevada, they would be able to go up Fast Food Lane, cut across onto Animus, go down Main Street, we could run the trolley around in that area, it would be, it would be a way to ignite the downtown area, it would be such a blessing for, and it would be a showstopping project. You probably know the statistic, but, you know, you probably know the statistic.
One of the things is, this entire area here, like I said, I think, whatever we do down the road is going to, is, we want to focus on that entire area here, to make sure it works properly for people coming into Trinidad, for locals as well, to beautify that entire area.
And to ordinarily incorporate Exit 13 and Exit 14, to make it a pass-through where there's all this CDOT land in the middle of our community, it would make it a win-win for everybody, it would be, it would be a national thing. As the largest gateway into the city, into the state of Colorado, we are the largest driving gateway, we are the second largest entryway, because DIA's the first, but we are the largest driving entryway in the state of Colorado. It would be such a beautiful union of a city and what CDOT could do. At one point, when they built this, they cut, CDOT built it, they cut the city in half, so the college started being on the outside of the area, and then the city forgot that we even had a college. This would bring everybody back together again and make a beautiful thing, plus economics. So at the 17,000 cars a day that was done by the 2021 survey through CDOT, they said 17,000 cars a day, that's 6.2 million cars a year, and if we let 95% of them go by, but we just took 5%, with, that's 310,000 cars, everybody stopping just to recharge or get fuel and dinner, just for two people, at $125 a person, that is $38 million to our downtown areas.
May I add something? So I have, I have a business on Commercial Street, but this is one of the problems that we, we're trying to identify as a tourism town. So what our problem is now, number one, we have no walkability on going down, going Commercial to Main, that's number one, number two is parking. So this area kind of fixes both of those problems, because people will be able to park there, it's not a long distance, there is architecture along Commercial and Main that they could see. And then, the city is continuing to work on, with the Greenway Foundation, to enhance the Riverwalk and make that a tourist attraction, and that would, that would increase the parking and access to that spot as well. And I want to thank you both for coming, I really appreciate, and I'm sure Ken's as well.
So Shoshana, what questions do you have for us?
I mean, I think, I'm still trying to understand, I get what the goal is, and trying to understand exactly what you're wanting to do with the area.
Well, like I said...
Like, if you're doing a rendering, what does the rendering show?
Well, the rendering, we don't have a rendering right now of any particular buildings or anything that are going to go in there, we're, you know, we just wanted to express to you the transportation other than this part, which was the entrance point, which is where it would go, this would go right in here.
Right, but are you asking us to use the right-of-way to do something different than is there now? Are you asking us to turn it into a pedestrian walkway, like?
If the one, if the one plan is followed, if I may, there would be some conversions of some of the parking to drive through. So to your point, if that initial path was created, which I think offers some unique benefits, it would require some of the existing parking to be yielded and converted to drive through.
I got it, okay, so you, you would use some of the parking spaces as a pass-through?
And the reason, charging stations?
Driving and charging stations.
Yeah, and, well, driving and charging stations, but the reason I think it's good is it's a, it's a really cohesive way to join Exit 13 to Exit 14, so that we can really advertise, hey, Experience, Experience Trinidad in a mile, meaning, you can get off on 13 and easily navigate your way through Trinidad, see what there is to offer, and be back on the highway of 14. It's just, it's a cohesive plan for that.
So as it is right now, what you would say is, forgive me, I'm just, I'm not familiar with the area.
Yeah, we're just trying to understand.
This is just right now, it is a flat asphalt parking lot, is that correct?
It has, it has some islands and separation, there's some, there's some grade changes that would need to be addressed, too, but they're not that...
Right, the only, the only thing that doesn't exist...
There is a little problem right here with it right now, because it's a very low-lying area, and you can go in the middle somewhere when there's a, I mean, it would be warm, and there's water that's pushing up through there, so there's a problem right here that we'd have to contend with.
I think we've heard about that issue.
The other thing I wanted to mention, to ask of you, is that, you know, if we're able to maneuver this new Exit 14 here, and then, of course, it would kill this exit all the way through here, this area right here that would be no longer used by CDOT, asking you, would that be something that maybe CDOT would be willing to donate back to the city for use to expand this area right in here, if it all works out?
The right-of-way.
Yeah.
Something we definitely look into.
Well, let's give the presentation, because everybody's agreeing with your presentation.
Sure.
We don't need to give our presentation, I mean, we came, we came with some information on projects we're doing, but we don't need to.
We just want to answer any questions that you might have, and that's the important part of it.
Currently, that would be the exit that's coming right through here.
Currently?
Yep.
This is 14 proposed?
This is the new 14.
Proposed, from the traffic study, correct?
Yeah. So primarily, you're asking us to look right now at the right-of-way access or property disposition possibilities?
I will say, like, I know, since it is within the footprint of the interstate, that all highways could be involved, just as a heads-up.
Okay.
It's within our footprint, even though at CDOTs, we would have to have to go through the feds to, to discuss what can and cannot. The other piece that I want to really look into is, what's going to go underneath those structures, right, you know, as far as, you know, what's proposed? One thing is, we're never going to do bridges, you know, it would be a challenge to have buildings there, and it's something we would, you know, obviously.
And, you know, there are some issues that we have seen, Council has seen, placing buildings where the platform is right now, simply because of the height of the highway.
We just, we would not want to disturb foundations in the interstate.
Right, I mean, it seems, just without knowing, without having done the research, it seems like it might be a case where federal highways would rather we do some sort of enhancement to make something possible, to maintain access when we need it.
There's definitely a process there, I have to know what it is, but they do have buy-in, since it is within the footprint of the state.
Sure, and I guess the big, the big ask today is just basically if you can kind of see our proposal and what we're thinking, if you think that it might work, and then we move forward from there.
So we can, we can explain this, okay? We would like the opportunity to explain.
Don't leave, we want to stay away from the buildings.
And we're not talking buildings, we're talking exactly what you were talking about.
Sure, all right. I'm Sal Pace, and I'm with the Chiumino Group and Kip Hamden, and first of all, I want to thank Shane and Shoshana for coming. Shane's the new Region Two Director, and we're very fortunate to have him here, as well as the CDOT Director. Trinidad, I think, has been historically, had been damaged at points in the past by past transportation decisions. The biaduct that divided the community hurt this town and split one part of town from the other, made it difficult for, for people to travel from one side to the other, especially when the train is stopped at the Amtrak stop, and it's now, it's now Trinidad's time to get what we deserve, and this is what Mayor Rico's been fighting for, in his eight years of service, we've seen tremendous development and growth and improvements in this community, and something this Council has really done well, from pushing for acquiring Fisher's Peak, to fighting for the Southwest Chief and for Front Range Rail, and it's an opportunity for collaboration and working together. And the vision of the, of Kip Hamden and the Chiumino Group is to work collaboratively with Council, with CDOT, to help bring some of these ideas to fruition. And in this case, last year, the city, working with CDOT, put together a really fabulous traffic study that came up with a number of solutions that can help alleviate a lot of concerns and traffic issues in Trinidad. There were some really excellent, there is some really excellent work done specifically on Exit 14, that can make the highway and the gateway to Colorado more accessible to Trinidad and tourism into Trinidad with a better design. Obviously, we all know, if you get off at Exit 14 or, or Exit 13, for instance, there's a lot of, you know, if you're getting off 13A, there's a lot of struggles with accessing Trinidad, and CDOT, to their credit, working with Trinidad, has really designed a number of really excellent improvements. And so, working collaboratively and coming up with a plan that includes access to downtown, access to all the different amenities, we can really activate this town and provide the backbone that's needed to turn this into the tourism and recreational-based economy that this town is really thriving on now. And so, you know, it's my pleasure to be a part of this team and be partners with the city and with CDOT and everyone to try to bring this to fruition. So I'm just kicking this off, and I'm passing it over to Jeremy Graham, who's going to talk a little bit about some of these.
He's actually got a jingle.
Yes.
We'll be listening to a jingle.
So before I get out my guitar, I'd just like to introduce myself and say, I've gotten the pleasure and privilege of working on some Trinidad projects, and I just think that we're on the cusp of something really special here, a really big transformation in Trinidad with everything that's going on, and with this, you know, new state-of-the-art transportation center, I think we need a new state-of-the-art jingle as well. And after today, I hope we're a step closer to both of those things, so.
Yeah.
You may not have been expecting the guitar in today's evening.
You're going all in.
I hope it's, I hope it's...
It's going to serenade us, is that what's...
That's precisely what's going to happen, so get ready.
We're taping this.
So it's called Experience Trinidad. When you drive down I-25, there's a six-block scene off Exit 14. You'll be glad that you stopped in Trinidad. When you need a place to recharge, in Trinidad, you'll be large. You can stay a day or stay a week from the Highway of Legends to the town of Fisher's Peak, you'll be glad that you stopped in Trinidad. In a train, or a bus, or by car, in Trinidad, bonds never fall. The city of champions will knock off your socks, experience it all in just six blocks, you'll be glad that you stopped in Trinidad. You'll be glad that you stopped in Trinidad.
Woo! Thank you, it was a pleasure. Now we want to hear Jay sing.
I thought we were all going to sing.
He's going to sing for me.
Yeah, I know that. Jeremy, thank you so much.
My pleasure.
And Jerry, thank you for sharing Jeremy with us. Very talented. Most of you don't know the history, but Jerry Graham, we've worked with Jerry, gosh, for over 40 years in the marketing and advertising department. I've never met anyone more creative than Jerry Graham, until I met his son, Jerry. And I'm sorry, Jer, but your son gives you a... And I'm sorry, Jer, but your son gives you a little bit of run for your life.
No harm in that.
So I'm Gina Chino, President of Kip Hamden. We might act like we're city planners, but we're not. We just love Trinidad, and we want to share our ideas on how to make this a better place. And it begins, well, it's began in a lot of different places, but now our scope is widening, and it's not focused on just things we're involved in, but it's focused on more global, more city-minded, more state-minded. And when we think about this plan, we're not thinking about today or tomorrow, we're thinking about, you know, the next 20, 30, 40 years when none of us in this room are here. And this is just a really cool place, and our children, our grandchildren are here to enjoy it. So, you know, several weeks ago, we did share the concept of the transportation center. And at the time, the concept did not include the vision of the Five Points area and the exit 14. This discussion happened in a collaboration and acknowledged that both visions were closely aligned. We're presenting this transportation center concept in hopes of connecting the visions while maximizing the efficient, cost-effective savings by utilizing current road systems.
Gina, let me jump in there.
Sure.
So we looked at this map already.
That's right. It starts at the same exit 14.
Pass this out for everybody. Why don't you get the pass first?
Did you want, Gina didn't sit and wait till the end of the passes.
Well, just because there's so much in there, and I didn't want to lose everybody.
So I think Shashana and her team are familiar with the intent on changing the exit. So everything here is existing roads. The Broom Street, you saw the little design to kind of improve it from kind of an alley to an access road. It cuts across, the only real change that we have here is a grade change going from the corner of Arizona and Pine up into the area where the parking is. And then that cuts across, right now, if you get off on exit 14, you have no idea how to get to fast food, you have no idea how to get to fuel, you have nothing. So we have that little entrance that we talked about, directing that traffic so they can get across to Highway of Legends, up to the college. So it's a matter of signage, minimal improvements to the road. This is me, not anybody here, but I'd say about half of it is brick and half of it is asphalt. You know, maybe if DOLA, you know, maybe would tie it all in with brick, and you'd have this cool brick strip that, you know, you just keep following it. It takes you from 14 to 13, fuel, charging, food, vacationing, everything you need to do is on that little six-block strip.
So let's talk about, at southbound, what the three options are, right? So in our plan, there's three options. A, you can go north where Commercial Street merges onto Arizona Avenue with a left turn onto Colorado where some of the most beautiful homes in this town are located. That's option one. Option two is to head south to the downtown and experience beautiful historic buildings, iconic streets, arts, entertainment, dining, you know, you name it. And then the third option is to head straight to the charging stations. So we take out the confusions of the Five Points and have three clear areas. From Broom Street, you can enjoy that journey by making a left onto Arizona and continuing to the entrance of what we're calling the Transportation Center, or you make a right and you go onto the street that takes you to the college. While traveling to that Transportation Center, you can also drive around, and there would be parking, hospitality, and, you know, things of that nature. As you head to exit 13, down the Purgatory River Rock Walk, Safeway Main Street, Santa Fe Trail takes you down there. All of this is within the six blocks that takes you from exit 14 to exit 13 and vice versa, and along the way are these charging stations that we're talking about. So that kind of, that six-block area is the Transportation Center. The center, I think, would provide the tourists a hub of functionality. It includes different forms of transportation. It connects the east and west part of town and provides travelers with the accessibility and walkability to the downtown. This revitalized landmark would serve as a welcome center for travelers where they can charge their vehicles and experience Trinidad. This proposed Transportation Center would have plenty of charging stations for electric vehicles, medium to heavy-duty vehicles. Its footprint would allow for additional future charging stations to be added. Interstate 25 is a federally designated electric vehicle, alternative fuel corridor, and this concept aligns with the state's goal for its electric vehicle infrastructure plan. This Transportation Center would also help, we believe, in helping Trinidad become a thriving town once again. The center is crucial to Trinidad's economic development as it connects tourism and the community by focusing on travelers getting off the interstate to experience Trinidad, its services, its rich culture, its outdoor offerings, all with ease and convenience. We believe this concept can positively impact our entire community, and so we're just asked, we're here to share this plan with you today, and we're asking you to look at it very closely, with your feedback, and if you like it, to share it with the community. So, any questions?
You know, what it is is we are, like you were saying, we're trying to set a baseline, not for today or tomorrow, but for down the road 20, 30, 40 years in the future. That's where we need to think, because we need to think further than just today and tomorrow. And by wherever we, whatever we do, or wherever we put the Transportation Center, we just need it in the right place where it can be visited by anybody, and the visibility coming on and off of the highway is of high importance to the city to get people off of the highway and give them the resources and the, that they need, whether it's gas, whether it's charging stations, whether it's just a rest place, whatever it needs to be, to be able to draw these people when they're coming. Like I mentioned when I first spoke, is we're in the middle of a 200-mile stretch either direction, so people need to stretch their legs. I think we'll be able to offer that opportunity immediately.
Lee?
Hi, my name is Lee. I own a fly-fishing shop and outdoor shop on Main Street, and this is important to me because we have a lot of tourists come through, and there isn't a lot of signage that helps into our downtown area. This past summer, we had a lot of tourists came through on the train, and they get off, and it's kind of not anything there, and I literally had to leave my shop and go pick people up to come and fly-fish with us. Like, are you guys going to do anything with that spot? Like, because it's just kind of a dirt hole.
Well, you know, we've been in discussions, we have ideas. You know, we have talked about a potential multimodal, you know, union station-type depot. You know, at one time, before the big flood, there was a depot down there, and the flood came through and took it out, and we've never replaced that. So, yeah, do we think that in the future, this town is deserving of a multimodal station, a depot where all different kinds of transportations and a welcome center, and tourists can come in and enjoy, and charging stations? Absolutely. That is our long-term vision, is a center like that. And we've brought that up with some of you, and we've gotten really good feedback. I don't think the town knows anything about that, that's really something that we've discussed internally, but if we're looking at, you know, 20, 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now, absolutely. And there are examples all over this country and small towns like this that have these types of Transportation Centers and Welcome Centers, and it's like the center of gravity, right? And what better way to grow this downtown and to grow this town but to locate a depot like that on property that's owned by the railroad, owned by the CDOT? I mean, you know, it's there, we don't have to recreate it.
Well, there's some other issues, I can't bring those up to date, but there's some other issues that could be included as well in that area, but I'm not going to bring that up today because that goes with the building process. But like I said, we're trying to look at this down the road, and what'll happen from this point forward is we just wanted for you guys to see what our possibilities, what we're thinking about. And council will make that decision as to, you know, what direction we feel is viable, and then will also involve the community in a hearing, work session, whatever it may be, where people can come in and express their own opinions as well. And then help us determine the best place to put the buildings up later on and what those buildings might be. So that will be the responsibility of the city of Trinidad and council.
And Phil, our group is in complete alignment with that, total alignment with that.
Do you have any other questions, any concerns that you have?
Yeah, just, I want to make sure that we leave this conversation knowing like what the next steps are and how to keep working together on sort of fleshing out the vision.
Would you give us a few more minutes, and we'll do that?
Absolutely.
I'm actually.
We're almost done.
I'm actually just, my name is Lori Chino, and I'm actually just, I've made.
Yeah, nice to see you again.
Welcome, everybody. I'm just here to offer a little bit of a fun fact. You know, the majority of my dad's kids, we all work for my father. I work on the other side, which is the dealership side of the business, and that's when I got an opportunity to meet you.
The first electric vehicle on the.
Yes, 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 yes. So, anyway, I just kind of wanted to just give you a little fun fact of how this all started. And so it started, you know, every morning, my sister and I get up, head down to my dad's house, which is about a mile from our house, and we have breakfast. So one particular morning, we got to dad's house, and we get there, and he, this time, he had all these papers like spread around him. And for some reason, I think I got there before Gina, which, whatever happened, but he just had this, like, look of, I gotta pull this together, like, you know, I gotta see this. So I walked in, and I was like, Dad, what's going on? And he's like, here, can you help me with these, with these files?
Maps.
These maps. And I'm like, what are you doing? He goes, well, I had a thought, but I need to go to Trinidad today, and I can't get down there today. You know, Gina, can you bring me down? No, Dad, I have a meeting. Vince, can you take me down? No, Dad, I have a meeting. And I go, well, I could take you down, and not having a clue what he's talking about. So we get in the car, we drive down to Trinidad, and of course, we're driving, you know, the white Explorer with the long dealerships labeled right on top. And, you know, when Dad gets on a mission, he, it doesn't matter where, you know, the road stops or where, you know. So the next thing I know is, he's like, take a look at, let's take a look at this property that, because he wanted to see if it was a pass-through, if those six blocks were a straight line through. He thought it was a possibility. And that day, we actually got out, walked it, maybe we shouldn't have been walking across the railroad tracks, Dad. We four-wheeled through some pieces of property that maybe we shouldn't have, but it's an experience today that I will never forget. But it all starts again with an idea and a vision, and all great things start with that, is a vision of one or many people. And this has been a really big contribution of everyone, but he had the idea, and he wakes up with them, I'm telling you, he wakes up with them. And we just had to see it for ourselves, and it worked. So, nice having you, thank you for coming down, thank you.
I guess you're asking, you know, what are the next steps, basically?
To flesh out the idea.
Yeah, to understand where, what this project may entail, the alignment of the streets, and just to let you know, a couple of weeks ago, we sat down, we began this conversation that we wanted to make sure that we're in alignment between them and the city as far as the way the street structure goes, because we felt like that is something that you needed to understand that we are in alignment there. And the resources down the road is something that we're going to need, that's where we're going to need your help with, applying for any grants. One of the things that, I just will mention this part of it, or this purchase of this property that we're thinking about, we do have to follow process. And you guys understand what that process, and that process is moving in place right now. For down the road, in the eventuality that something gets built there, then we'll apply for funding for those buildings. So we want to make sure that we have those processes in place and done in that eventuality. And of course, you mentioned that, being that it's on interstate, I'm not sure, you know, what your next step would be to get information back to us so that we can know, well, this take two months, will it take six months, will it take a year, what it might take to go through this process to get clearance, I guess, is what I guess we're looking for from the federal highway, I guess, I guess that's what it'd be.
The more specific you can be in asking us to look at something with that right-of-way, the easier it is for us to run down the road if possible.
Yeah.
So, you know, if you can show us what the parts of the parcel is, like a map that shows the exact locations of what you're hoping to do that we could share with our federal partners, is sort of the way to run down if there's.
Let's go back to this larger.
Yeah, but.
Map here.
They'll ask us for things like longitude, latitude, and the kind of specific, yeah.
A survey map.
A survey map, yeah.
Essentially, yeah.
The concept absolutely makes sense, but.
Like I said, this area, this is the area that you're talking about, because this is I-25 going south. So it would be this, this area right in here is where you're talking about, that you have to get, you know, the green light from.
I think it's this area too, right?
It's here, you know, improvements you make underneath the viaduct. The improvements you make within the interstate. Yeah, and so those are things that we would want to coordinate with. So whenever you get the details hashed out as to your proposed layouts, et cetera, that's when we would take it to federal highways.
Okay.
The ramp itself, you know, you mentioned something about a, I think you said, it's essentially called a slip ramp. We usually don't do those. That being said, you know, you'd have access off of Commercial Street to get into, and there's reasons behind that, right? And then I think what you discussed also is you're going through a process of purchasing right-of-way here, and that's the uniform act, and you guys are doing that. As long as you're following that, you're good to go.
Yeah, we're doing that right now.
Yeah, perfect, so, okay.
So that kind of explained to you what, and I understand the next steps that you're looking for, so thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, that'll help us kind of start that conversation with federal highways and also internally as well as, okay, what's the next step that we need to go through to help you achieve where you're going?
And just to let you know, we do now have a planner on board.
Good.
And it's Keely, she's right behind you there. This is basically her first day, in a sense.
Third day.
Third day?
Third day.
So we'll be working more closely with her on this.
Good, that's exciting.
Okay.
Great.
All right. Anything else from?
Yeah, I'm asking you, Phil.
I've got someone else to say. And welcome, Keely, we've been looking forward to your arrival.
Thank you very much. You've been quite suspiciously nice.
Well, we'll find out, we're a pretty nice town, we really do care about each other in the town. And thanks for all of you being here, you're all leaders to be here, for all the places that you came in the world to. For all the places that you came in the world to end up right here today, it's because you guys are all really great leaders. And with that, and Shoshana, that exit over there by 11, the overpass, and the way they did it was really grand and thank you for that. It's even the beautification of it is pretty. And so as leaders in this community, we have to worry about sustainable transportation in our future and sustainable tourism. In that six block area, yes, some of this will be repeated, but we have the railroad and Amtrak and the highway that joins that area, an area that could have EV charging, the buses, bus tang, historical buildings, hiking, biking, trails can come from that area. And of course, Pine Street, which has been started to be worked on with the college to try to turn Pine Street into an entryway into the college, which is really a cool idea. When I first heard it, I didn't understand it and then I went and looked at the area and what they're doing is, it's pretty amazing on the flip side of that area. And with EV charging stations and how they're known for clear, clean air, I just want everybody to know, something that we're always should be proud of in sustainable tourism, is that Trinidad has some of the best air quality. And we talk about this randomly in Trinidad, but people don't really advertise how important that is to our area. You can come here and breathe. There's people that go to places like Springs and Hot Springs, but Trinidad's air quality is 85. And to let you know how good that is, I did some other checks, like Colorado Springs is 69, Pueblo is 67, Denver 31, Seattle 15, Palm Springs 76. So we should be proud of the area, how we have with clean air and to ordinary be one of the top places on the I-25 border in the state to have EV charging stations, because we have so much to be proud of in that. But we need to really take control, really, we need to take control of our city. We love the mines, right? We all love the mines. It's part of our heritage, part of who we are. But the mines are privately owned and they open and close and reevaluate themselves every so many years and it's a boom and a bust in our economy. I just heard that Walmarts were starting to close in Albuquerque, Manal, the big Walmart is closing this year because of all the online sales. And as someone who runs a hotel in this area, we actually get extra pilots through the Christmas season because of all the Amazon packages that are coming into our town. What would we do if we also lost Walmart? What would we do to replace that tax revenue? What would we do about those jobs? We have to be good stewards, we have to be good champions for this city. I mentioned earlier about the CDOT numbers and the 17,000 cars a day and 5%, we bring 310,000 cars at $125 a piece, would bring $38 million to our businesses downtown. Isn't that crazy? And that's even, that's not even with the entertainment or hotel stays. If you average everybody spending another $125, you're talking about 70 to 80 million dollars brought in the downtown area for our businesses. That's making sure that we're counting on us. That's not caring about another business, although we love the businesses, it's not really, we have to take control, we have to be good. If you had your own home, how would you take care of your home? You would make sure that you had a revenue, that you were supporting your family. We have to be champions to make sure we're supporting our family and our downtown businesses. And then there's always the multiplier effect. Some of this has been set already. And then, you know, we really have to make a really, a concerted thing is what is one of the amenities that we have? We have so many beautiful history, history is here is huge, historical buildings here are huge, but one of the amenities that we have to make sure somehow gets downtown is that number one driving entryway in the state of Colorado is right here. So let's, you know, let's make them, let's make them glad they stopped in Trinidad, right? Let's make them glad. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you so much for all of you being here. Let's work together as a team and let's make sure to take care of our downtown family. You have all been here. When I first came here, I could name the stores that were downtown. We knew what it was here in 1990. Stayfic, I mean, Main Street Cafe wasn't even here yet. The Colombian wasn't redone. There was nothing on that street. We had a jewelry store and pawn shops and a bank and the Hallmark store. That was it, on the whole Main Street. On Commercial Street was much less than that. I remember walking down Commercial Street saying, what is wrong? Look at that peak, how can we possibly have such a beautiful area? And there's not businesses here. We have worked our asses off to build up Trinidad. You go downtown and talk to any of those businesses, they're dying for something to happen downtown. This is something that's good for the state, something that's good for the city and something that's good for our families. So let's all be champions and, you know, be the great spirits that all you guys are in this room. We're all fighting for the same thing. Let's just work together to make it happen.
Does council have any questions?
We have one more thing. A little smile on your face. And that's Karen, he's going to come back for one last song.
Like any jingle repetition, it's really important, so you gotta play the jingle again. But I'm 100% sincere, it's really exciting, everything's going on in Trinidad and it's really cool to be just a small part of it. And I do want to mention Jay wrote some of these lyrics too, so it's a good, it's a good collaboration. He and I are like the new Lennon McCardneys. We're going on story.
I'm glad, I reckon that you should get this on the Fishers Peak website. It's awesome.
So if we have time for it, me or I'll do it real quick. When you drive down I-25, there's a six-block scene off Exit 14. You'll be glad that you stopped in Trinidad. When you need a place to recharge, in Trinidad you live large. You can stay a day or stay a week from the highway of legends to the top of Fishers Peak. You'll be glad that you stopped in Trinidad. In a train or a bus or by car. In Trinidad, fun's never far. The city of champions will knock you off your socks. Experience it all, there's just six blocks. You'll be glad that you stopped in Trinidad. You'll be glad that you stopped in Trinidad. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
I want to say, you know, Shoshana, Jane, thank you for coming to Trinidad.
It's a pleasure.
For the presentation. Also want to thank, you know, the Chiumino group for, you know, all these renderings and bringing forth some information for us, for council to consider down the road. And we will work together to see what, what's the best thing that we can put together for, not for us, not for you, but for the entire citizenry of Trinidad as well as tourism, people that tour us that come through the area. So we'll work together.
I would like to say also, thank you, Phil, for inviting us and thank you all for being here. And Shoshana, thank you so much for driving all the way down from Denver to Trinidad.
Always good to see you.
Good to see you.
Jane, thank you guys. Thank you.
Always good to see you. There's some trails over there. You look beautiful, your garden looks amazing. I like the song, yeah, it's really good. We haven't got a jingle. Why was nobody singing along? Why was nobody singing along? I was like ready to sing along. I would have been better if people did. He's still here, we're still here. I got one. It's really catchy, you should use it.
Yeah, no, it really is.
So what do you think?
I think we need to get a survey grade map of what parcels is. Like you can do things under Vida. Have you ever been, have you ever been to Glenwood Springs?
Yeah, they've got a beautiful
You can do stuff under a, yeah. New York and so you can get the feds to say yes, we just need to know exactly where and exactly where. And there's things that are easier than you would say, like murals. You want to paint a mural on a post?
Those, those, I mean, those, the boys under that highway, they look like pictures from the books.
We would let you paint them. So if you find, if you find an artist
We'll have to excuse yourself because I'm just a car dealer.
You're like the most creative car dealer I've ever met.
Your first time in Trinidad?
No, I've been in Canada.
First time in this
I want to come try and play with some cars though. I want to come play with some cars.
We've got to.
Yeah, I need to come visit
I've got some elect, Shoshana, I've got some new elects now.
Yeah, can I come test drive?
Absolutely. Are you kidding? Of course. Love to serve you.
Let's do it.
Let's go.
You got it. That's not even my dominant one. Yeah, but think about easy stuff you could do, like painting, painting the posts.
Because it's such, it's such a, it's a dirt.
So let's hold down tomorrow. To figure out a few things we can do that are easy to start, we'll get something happening. I would honestly say painting murals on the coast is not that hard. It doesn't cost a lot of money. We know how to say yes to it. We have a little grant program. Revitalizing Main Street has been used before to do things like paint murals. So like run a contest to get some local artists to paint them. That's what I would do for a survey. Yeah.
They're gorgeous.
Yeah, so like
They're wearing the summits around.
Yeah.
It's just like waiting for the
Great, find us some local artists. Let's do it, okay. I love painting, I request.
They're going to come back once we surprise you.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, of course. My pleasure. Gina and Lori, go say goodbye. Hi, nice to see you again. These guys are I was saying like find a few
She did
It's not that hard, we said for People like
Some of the
I think I've changed the I'm listening I think it's I told Shane like our original Yeah, and Shane's good for He's the best team. I need some creative people
Mommy, for her side.
Honestly, a flyer parents I'm happy If I were you I'd say Yeah, that's what I mean. Yeah, I can't I'm talking hard, you know, like
Ash does her hook with like
We can make it pretty That would be nice Yeah, we've got a lot of meetings. Yeah, I can't You know, like
Yeah, one time We work
Yeah. That's my neighbor's Ash does her hook with like We can make it pretty That would be nice Yeah. Yeah. That's my neighbor's We can make it pretty That would be nice Yeah. 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 Oh, yay.
Yeah. So we work with the show to redirect the fund making. Can we, can we do groundbreaking when you get the groundbreaking? When does the RFP go?
Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started here.
We have to give her
All right, let's go ahead and get started, folks. Okay, we're going to go ahead and on to the second item, which is the fourth quarter 2022 marijuana sales tax allocation discussion. And we do have, you know, several different items. Is Cheryl going to join us?
Mayor Cheryl is not feeling well today, but we have her virtually, so we're getting her access to share her screen.
Okay, Cheryl, why don't you go ahead and take care or take over from here, explain Cheryl, are you with us?
And she just texted. Try calling her.
Well, she's probably getting her guitar.
I think she plays the accordion. Hi, Cheryl, yeah, we can hear you on my cell phone.
Sorry, I didn't know what happened. And can somebody allow me to share my screen?
Donna may be the host.
Donna may be the host, so you should have access to share your screen now. Oh, there it goes.
Oh, there it is. Okay. Alrighty, so today we'll be discussing the fourth quarter twenty twenty two marijuana requests. The amount of marijuana sales tax received was five hundred nine thousand seven hundred sixty eight dollars.
And Cheryl, sorry to interrupt you, if you could zoom in just a little bit. If that's possible. And if not, that's okay too. Uh, thank you, that's much better.
Yeah. So that yielded five hundred nine thousand seven hundred sixty eight dollars in sales tax. And of that, hundred fifty thousand is sent to the general fund for ongoing expenses. Leaving a remainder of three hundred and fifty nine thousand seven hundred and sixty eight dollars for allocation. Sixty five percent of that, or two hundred and thirty three thousand eight hundred forty nine dollars, has been requested by staff. And I believe you received all those requests in your, uh, in your packets. I'm, I'm pretty sure staff is available for any questions or comments, but, um, if you'd like to go through the items one by one. Please just call on these staff numbers.
Rachel, do I do have one question, Cheryl?
Yes.
You know, we had that, uh, less quarterly ongoing hundred fifty thousand. And with this new request to city projects. Noah's Ark support of twenty five thousand dollars per quarter, is that the recommendation?
Mr. Mayor, yes, um, so we're, we're looking at distributing instead of giving them a hundred thousand dollars upfront. Uh, distributing over the course of, uh, marijuana allocations quarterly. Um, I do want to point out that, um, should this funding be authorized, we'll also take that, uh, direction. To amend the contract that we have with them as well.
Well, the other thing too is that it's going to increase that less quarterly ongoing to a hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy five thousand. Uh, dollars per, per quarter, correct?
Correct. Yeah, it'll be committed, I mean, we'll bring it forward and of course, it's discretionary of the council to authorize it each quarter.
The big question here is, and, and I'm trying to think, that's the only one here. In the end, if, if it happens that the marijuana sinks quite a bit more, uh, we'll have to be careful with that contract. I'll be that on my, I think, K.
Yeah, and you'll have that option every quarter, Mayor.
It could, it could happen, so just remember. Councilman Shu, I think I got a question.
Yeah, and this is just.
Go ahead.
Mr. Uh, I'm talking about Noah's Ark.
Yeah.
Have we found out, uh, about the systems up there and the repairs and whatever we got to do with that? Is that?
Yeah.
The, how are we going to handle that?
Yeah, so it'll come out of capital, um, for any improvements we need to do there, and I'll, I can yield to Audra, she's kind of been working with the contractor on that.
So, um, right now, we're waiting on estimates to find out what that's really going to look like. Um, it's the heating and air conditioning system, and we know that we're going to have some costs involved. We're waiting for that list, though, to know exactly.
What else concerned about, another one was on warranty, or some of it is on warranty, or what?
Again, I'm waiting for the list to figure out what exactly is under warranty and what's not. Um, and then we'll go back to the general contractor and talk to him, them, about, um, what their responsibilities may be versus our responsibilities.
And is like, the system, we need to get it up right away for the dogs and stuff, I mean, is there going to be an issue for time element and stuff?
Right, the items that need to be fixed and addressed immediately, we're just doing. And then again, we'll take those back to the general contractor and say, look, we have to get these things done. We didn't have time to wait.
Do you have an item, a product or items that maybe you're looking at that have to get fixed right now immediately? Anything in particular?
It's, it's all with, um, the air exchange and, oh, cut me off guard. Let me think for a second what the other item is.
The, the outside duct work needs to be replaced.
Yep, that's a big ticket item. And that one, we may be able to really get addressed with the general contract.
Right, not, um, not asking to have them identified, but what, what city is that general contractor out of?
Trinidad.
In there, okay.
What happened, just to give you an idea. The staff at the shelter called because it smelled like there was an electrical fire in the building and they called the, uh, HVAC person. And there's been several issues with it. But I did talk to Tara Marshall Friday, and she thinks there's a dollar grant that we can apply for. Just for the HVAC.
Yeah, the biggest concern would be the house, the animals, we don't want to have an issue where we'd have to move them somewhere or something. I mean, we've got to keep them inside the building and if we add more to it, so, I mean, that would be the only concern.
We're addressing the immediate concerns now, and then, um, we'll be getting the cost for everything and the details on everything, so that we know how.
Okay, let's go ahead and just start from the, the top of the list here. The ADO demolitions, uh, you know, ten thousand dollars, I know you've allocated more money in the past toward that because of, uh, the reduction in money that we've been getting. The question I have there is, do we have, how much money do we have in ADO right now? Is there a lot of that money still in there?
So Cheryl, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we aren't rolling over the money, correct? So, I think.
That's correct, we don't roll over the money. We do not.
So it's per quarter.
The other, the other thing too is, some of the money I saw were, um, when we've sent out notices to people and the liens, some of the money has been coming back. You know, from those liens, does that money go into the ADO portion of that, or does that go into the general fund?
Cheryl, do you want to answer that?
Um, it, the money is going back into the general fund unless it's directly, um, paid. It's hard to explain, if it's directly, uh, if the police department is billing the homeowner and they pay, pay directly for the contractor fees, then it's going back in the demolition money. But usually when we put the liens on the property, it's years out, fifty months or years out, so we're just dumping it into the general fund.
But it just, it seems like you guys are having a lot of, or reasonable amount of success with getting some of this money back, it looks like, so that's good. Any questions on the ADO demolition? Okay, uh, Creative District Startup Funds, fifty thousand, explain what that's all about.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, so the Creative District has asked us, as they get off and, and running now that the space to create is finished, for some startup funding this year. Um, and they, their request is fifty thousand. We, in talking with Wally, we feel like it would be put to really good use to really, um, start being a catalyst for, for developing some good things there. But instead of bringing you the full fifty thousand and one request, we thought it more prudent to break it into increments quarterly, so it wouldn't be anything that'd be ongoing past this year. It's fifty thousand dollars for the year, but it's just broken up into quarterly amounts.
And exactly, yeah, exactly what we, are they using it for?
They have.
I mean, for programs or.
Yes, yeah.
Employment or anything?
Well, right now, we have, um, the Smithsonian project coming in in December and through to January. We have Good Night Moon, we have, um, a couple of things that we're still working on as far as, um, youth projects there at the Commons. So all of this money would help facilitate and get those on the ground and start running.
Yeah, that's, I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's quite a few, um, new programs that we're trying to get started.
Okay.
Well, it's good to have you on board, because now we can start, we have one person that we can direct our questions to.
Happy to be here.
In the past, been kind of.
Yeah.
Who's going to answer the questions?
Right. I know.
You have a question, bud?
Um, Aunt Margie.
Yes.
Part of it is for operation maintenance, um, scheduling, that's part of what the request is for. Is that not part of what your job is? To operate, manage that space, or is that not correct?
Well, a portion of that space for now, is what I have been told, and that's the Commons, the flex space, the kitchen, the, um, everything but the garage.
Right.
Okay. I was, I was just, in terms of understanding.
And then the other thing that's really important about Creative District to understand is that we're going to be recertifying in June. And we need to have, um, operating costs at a minimum of ten thousand available to us at all times, so, um, a portion of that is to maintain that level.
You're saying that you don't have control right now over the back portion of the garage area?
I do not, that's economic development, that's Wally.
Any point in the future that maybe might roll back over into her area?
It potentially could.
Yeah, I mean, we're hoping that's what the grant was written for, a different aspect than economic development, but.
And I noticed that back in that area, of course, it's kind of outside the scope of the, of this year, but there's all those new compartments that have been built. I guess that's for the eventuality, that's something they want to make those spaces.
Yeah, that's, that's the, we're trying to keep as true to the original vision as we can.
I'm, I'm asking out of interest for clarification, you said some of the projects, you said Good Night what?
Good Night Moon. Just past the one hundred year, um, what's the term I'm looking for? Copyright, so, um, the people who knitted the frog, Ken and Emily.
Oh.
They're knitting a sixteen by sixteen book of Good Night Moon, and Frog will be reading it out in different languages, and that'll be, um, March fifth through June second.
And that's, that, the point of that is to like, draw people there then?
Draw people there, we hope to get, um, field trips from a variety of schools in Los Angeles County out there and then do hands-on art projects.
I was just curious as to what. Okay.
We wouldn't be allowed to do it if the copyright hadn't passed.
Right, okay. Okay, any other questions on that line item? Okay, onto Noah's Ark support, any questions on that, we've already had a little discussion on that, does everybody feel comfortable with that? Anyways, okay? Okay, economic development space to create rekeying, I'm not sure if anybody read that. What it is, what that is, is that, uh, since the construction project was done, I guess the keys are probably all over the board. So they want to go ahead and rekey that. So it, so it does make sense to redo that, so there's just.
It's expensive.
Yeah.
It is expensive working.
And then, of course, we have some fire department asks here, what is airlifting bag? If you guys read that, that the bank system that they have right now is pretty much outdated. And they're asking for this funding to, for a new airbag system, any questions on that? Radio communication equipment, and it sounds like they have trouble communicating sometimes. Does you want to explain? I want to feel like a duck.
So, this radio communication is for both of our stations. Um, since I've been employed with the fire department, we know who replace those radios or the speakers. Um, if you guys remember what Charlie Brown's teacher sounded like, that's kind of what it sounds like in our stations, we have to get in our trucks and actually respond to the call. Um, now we figure out where we're going, we know we have a call sometimes, uh, we're missing some calls as well, so I, I'd like to upgrade communication in both stations with this money.
Uh, how soon would you have those in hand?
Um, right now, my radio guy has enough to do station one, and then he said in a couple of months he'll have the equipment to do station two.
I just, just out of curiosity, the radio, how, how's that work, is that radio linked from where to where?
So we have an antenna on our, on our station up on Santa Fe Trail, and it bounces off of Bowen Hill, which comes out of dispatch at the police department.
Okay.
And then we have an antenna on station two on the back.
Okay.
Aren't most of your calls dispatched from the PD anyway?
A hundred percent of our calls are.
That's what I was saying, so, is, is it updating the communis, the, your communication system, does that involve the PD too?
No, so ours is our building specific, so from our antennas all the way down to the radio that sits in the, the station and the speakers that are throughout the station. And in the bays.
So Chief, give me, give me an example, okay, so you get a call that there is a fire, so you have to correspond or communicate with the other fire station?
No, so when dispatch tones us out, it, it's sent out to both stations.
Okay.
And it, depending on where you're at in the station, you may understand what she's saying, and other times you won't understand what she's saying, we just know we have a call. So we'll get in our apparatus and start to respond, and then we call them on our, um, mobile radios in our truck and get the address and actually what's going on.
Is that, uh, is that connected to EMT as well?
To the ambulance district?
Yes.
We, we have their channel in our radios, um, but they have a problem on, on their side of the fence as well that they need to do, deal with, but that's not the city, that's the ambulance district themselves.
Any other questions on that line item? Okay, next items, you're up there, the structural engine equipment?
Right, and last year I came to you and told you I don't, I have two engines that don't have a lot of equipment on, that's what this money's for. And Cheryl and I, we kind of have a plan, we're just going to take one bite at a time, and, and as money comes available, I'll just be up here begging for money for. Instead of asking you for, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars.
How close, how close does this get you to where you need to be?
This is the start on those two, we've been trying to equip the other engines that are first out right now. So this is the start of working on those two engines.
Seems like our equipment at the fire station is pretty outdated.
It, it is, but you've got to understand, the equipment that we're buying will last twenty, thirty years unless NFPA cancels it out. And so like our airbags, NFPA says they're good for ten years, we've been using them for twenty four. At some point, we're going to be trying to lift something off of somebody, and that airbag's just going to break. So we need to kind of stay up on those NFPA guidelines before we put our folks or our community at risk.
Okay, any questions on the structural equipment?
On the, on the new trucks that we buy, you have to buy the equipment.
Most of our equipment, um, and I say most, um, we would move off of our first out.
Okay.
And put it on the new trucks, um, on that, on that one structural engine that we're getting hopefully this year. Um, the wildland, we are having to buy new equipment for that old truck.
I'm not questioning, I just like.
No, I, I, it's a good question, I'm glad you're asking.
Uh, so you're saying that new wildland equipment, is there going to be quite a bit of output on that?
There will be, but that's not scheduled to come in until twenty twenty four, so I'm trying to get this other truck up to speed this year. And then I'll start requesting money at the first part of next year for that other truck.
Okay, on the next line item is a structural fire gear, and that's pretty understandable that that fire gear is getting.
And that's a program we started last year, you bought me three sets. And again, all of our gear is getting towards the ten year period, and that one I have to maintain. Um, and by ten years, it's pretty well shot, goes in the trash, we can't reuse it after years. And then I'm trying to get my folks two sets, so like if we have a fire, they need to drop their gear off and get it washed and have another set to still complete their shift. So we're, we're in the process, this will give me eight new sets, and we have seventeen guys we need to outfit times two, so again, it'll be a process.
Thirty more sets is what you're going to need.
Yeah, yeah, but I don't want to buy them all upfront, if we can, you know, I'll come to you before the end of the year and ask for a few more sets, but I don't want them all ending up on the same year. Because then we're going to have to replace them that year.
I have an FYI question again.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I've been watching too much television, that's the problem. They had an expose on fire, uh, personnel's.
Ensemble, yeah.
And they're saying that is, uh, uh, contributes to the.
The cancer.
Yeah.
Right, because, uh, what they make, what they put in it to make it fire retardant or fire resistant, um, is actually giving us cancer.
So are these the same? They don't, they've never changed?
They haven't found a way to, to fix that yet.
Okay.
So, yeah, they're going to have it in.
Okay.
So is that that PFAS that's.
Yep. Yep. And so that's why we do kind of a clean cab concept, or an SOP for that, actually Captain Ortiz did, he put it together on one of his trainings. But as soon as we have a fire, you're supposed to decon, strip it all down, don't get in the cab because it's off gassing. Um, and then put it in the laundry, get it washed, but it takes two days to dry, um, because we can't put it in a dryer, so it has to air dry. Um, we're looking at building us an air dryer, but, so they'll need another set to finish out their shift, so these are the things we're working on. But it, so it's like thirty one hundred dollars. But it, so it's like $3,100 for a jacket and a pair of pants. So it's quite a bit of money.
Are they designer?
By each manufacturer. And they're custom fit. The guy comes in and measures.
Oh, nice. Very nice.
Any other questions?
No. I think I did enough.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Fleet maintenance diagnostic tool. And that was, I guess, another lift.
And there we have Rico here. He can answer any fleet questions for the next couple of items.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, everyone. How are you today?
Good.
Good. So talking about the four-post lift. So right now I have five guys in my department, but I only have two lifts. So we're running into issues where we have the cars outside, we have the parts ready to go, but we have no lift. And a lot of times the lift is a good use item. I mean, because there's repairs that need to be done that require the lift. For example, we're getting ready to do an engine swap in a police car. And you have to have a lift to do it on these engines that come out the bottom. And quite frankly, it's a lot faster and it's a lot safer and it saves the body from having to, you know, get on the floor, saves your knees, stuff like that, your back, so on and so forth. So once again, adding another lift to the shop would benefit everybody, everybody and keep the efficiency at peak performance.
Adding another lift, does it create a problem with space? Do you have adequate space for anything else that you have to do?
Yes, sir. We do have adequate space to be able to fit the lift in there. So that will not be an issue.
Again, the reason why I bring that up is if you put another lift, it starts cramping your style for the space. Then you're looking at adding on, building and that's a whole nother.
Right, absolutely. I would not expand this avenue, you know, expand this avenue, excuse me, if that was an issue.
Questions on that one, Lee? Thanks for the work you're doing, but I heard good reports that the fleet has really kept the readiness at a really, a really nice level. So we appreciate that. I did have a question about the diagnostic tool of, of our entire fleet. And I'm sure, I would say excluding like heavy trucks. What percentage of the vehicles will this give you the ability to use a diagnostic tool on?
So we're going to be able to scan vehicles, basically like anything that has an OBD-2 connector. So I would say from like F-50 down. That would cover all that. And we do have a scan tool that we can scan the heavy diesels along with the off-road equipment as well. So we have a capability to talk to modules of anything that we have in the fleet.
Okay. And then on, if, if we can discuss the four-posts as well. On that, do you have lifts that have the ability to remove tires and work on the, the all the drive lines and drive?
Axles.
Yeah. Axles and everything. Will this, this four-post, will that be able to do that or not necessarily?
So the two that we do have now give us that capability, but this will, you know, adding this will allow another tech, being we have five, to be able to get vehicles in quicker, diagnose, repair, and now.
It's not the type that you drive on and the wheels have to remain on. It'll lift it up off its, off its wheels then?
Yeah, this is the one we actually drive up on. So we have one four-post right now and then we have one two-post.
I guess I'm, it, the wheels will be able to come off us on the lift though?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure because some, some of the more affordable lifts, the vehicles have to remain wheels on. And then that really limits what repairs you can do, so.
So what we'll do is we'll have like the, these little roller jacks that go in between on the frame rail. And then that's how we're able to jack it up and take it along.
Do you know what brand you're getting on?
It's a rotary. It's a rotary.
Okay. Oh, rotary, sure.
Yes, yes, sir.
You know, you're talking about your diagnostic tools and I don't know if the city will be moving in that direction anytime soon. But you know, we had a lot of discussion here about EV vehicles. And I don't know if the city down low will be purchasing any EV vehicles. What do we need to do to get ready for that in your shop? Will they need this diagnostic stuff working, those EVs?
I think it's going to be a lot more than what we have right now, along with schooling. And then of course, like charging setups and stuff like that. It's going to be a lot of heavy education. So we would have to go back to school and basically learn how to run these because they're very complicated.
I'll tell you, with the cost of EV vehicles, what I've seen in insurance digests and stuff, you're probably better off to stay with a fossil fuel. The batteries on those vehicles are about 60,000.
Yeah, and then when you, it's charging.
Okay, why did you bring that up? Just a point.
Yeah, I would strongly suggest to stay with fossils.
Just, just kind of a simple question. I, I know the police chief mentioned that a lot of times he brings his vehicles in there. And you have inventory for some of his vehicles for oil check. Do you keep an inventory for the other trucks and stuff on the city? I mean, I, I would think it'd be a good idea that you don't have to run for parts and stuff like that. Do you kind of keep a, do you have a running inventory for all your vehicles?
We're actually working on, working on that right now. So the city allowed us to get the I-Rex fleet management module. So we're able to keep track of inventory and everything, you know, on the electronic format. So we're, we're working on that right now. So.
All right, thank you, Rico.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, the IT shortage extension licenses, that I think is, if everybody read their information, that pretty well knows. It's a given. We're going to have to do that regardless because we have to buy those licenses. Otherwise, some of them will get shut down. So one of those, hate to have, but have to happen. Outdoor recreation event and office promotion, $3,000. Let's talk about both of those items, RadFest promotion and the office promotion. I didn't open my computer, but there are some, in both of those areas, they're asking for some of those signage, the same type of signs in both of those requests. I was wondering why.
Answer that question.
So the RadFest has its own branding?
Yeah.
And, and part of that is making sure that Trinidad is doing everything it can to keep that fest coming here annually. And so part of that's by doing a good marketing and promotion.
It was some of the, some of the signage was the same in both requests.
Looks like one's traffic control. It says.
There's on the $3,000 one, there's a Rad banners to notify and promote the event among city and county residents. And then on the other one, it is development and production of Rad banners, flyers and other related marketing to notify, educate the public of the event. That seems duplicative. And I'm wondering, don't, doesn't the RadFest have its own banners? Or does it not have, like, what would our banners say other than Red? I'm trying to figure that out.
Same thing on the other signs.
Yeah. It just said that to notify, to pay for them. And then this one looks like to develop and produce. But I don't really know what the difference is.
So I wonder how much from each request we go toward those banners and if both those are actually needed?
I don't think it's a bad idea. Last year when it was in town, I was kind of like, where are the banners? You know, there should be banners letting people know what's going on. So if we have to do that, I, I.
That one, that one amount seemed to, to, to be tailor-made to increase awareness of, of the town side. So I think to your point, I think it would really be helpful for that.
I guess just get, I don't, probably just get my little clarification and just get some information.
We'll bring some clarification when we bring this through your booth.
Okay, I have a question.
Okay, so I know, I understand that some of this on the first amount of 3,000 can't be paid for by tourism dollars. But the 2,000 for the shirts, stickers and banners, why can't that come out of tourist money?
50 mile radius.
Yeah, but that's why I saved the, the two 500s would be within that 50 mile radius. But is the tourism board giving money to the RadFest?
I don't know that they are. I don't know that Jared has made an ask of them yet, or if he will. They, theirs is advertising, marketing outside of the 50 mile radius. And so some of the things that we want to do is the hanging banners across Main and Animas and also over here. Also the, the banners that go along the light poles. You know, we have all the new banners. We want to do some for RadFest. Anything we can to, to make locals realize that it's happening. It's an annual event. We want you to embrace it. And also this year, instead of it just being the bicycle event, we're going to make it more of a community event. So perhaps a chili cook-off or, you know, a regional, something regional cook-off. Something just a little bit more so that the community gets involved and it doesn't feel like the community has this being put in their laps instead of the community going out and enjoying it as well. So that's what the expense really is for the RadFest.
Who is, um, visioning how that part is gonna be, what that part is going to be like?
So right now it, the meetings have involved Jared, Wally, myself, Steve when he's available. Anisa's going to help. She's got a really good marketing background. And then also Tamara from Rad. And eventually we're going to involve all of the department heads as well so that we make sure we make it a good event.
I think that's, that's a really good idea.
I think what we do is we invite the governor from New Mexico and the governor from Colorado to have a session.
Get up a bike off. No, I was just wondering because.
What is the chamber's role in that?
The chamber, last year, I'm trying to think if they did the year before, handled the beer garden for them. This year, we're kind of hoping to make it an alcohol beverage festival. The challenge is going to be figuring out what, which licensee will be willing to come forward to make that application. But that's the hope because if they can come bring their food and have this, you know, regional food, basically food cook-off, not just one kind of it, but a cook-off. Then they could also sell alcohol while they're there at their booth and sell and serve their food there.
So I'm sorry, we're off the path, I'm sure, but.
Someone else is.
Who is, who's going to be creating the food then?
We're going to ask the restaurants.
Oh, good. Cause I think that would be, that would be fantastic, obviously, if we could really help their earning potential for the week.
That's why I'm, I'm a proponent of the alcohol festivals for that reason because it helps all of the businesses.
Instead of the chamber doing that one.
Right. And you know, I know that, and the chamber actually can be involved too at the same time. So it's, but to help all of them, I think would be a really good thing. So. And the folks with Rad are very community focused. They want to make sure, and I should tell you, they didn't ask for any of this money. They, they're really the flip side of things. They paid our fire department for what they provided last year. And they gave donations to, they gave a donation to the Chamber of Commerce for helping, you know, deal with all of that. This year, we also want to do some like games and things like that. Maybe a cornhole tournament that, that then spouses or families can participate in. We thought about scavenger hunt. So any of your ideas are welcome.
Audra, I, I just want to say one last thing and then I'll be. I think if, if there's any way to involve being able to open that concentration of out-of-town people, if there's any way to be able to open up to other businesses, say, just a business wants to put up a booth and represent their wares to some level and say, hey, for more of this stuff, come visit our store here. I think that'd be, because anything we can do to spend a dollar in Trinidad would be, and help the people run a business, I think that'd be good.
Exactly. And we want the market fest, the farmers market to make sure that they're open and writing their show during all of that. Try to make it a really nice big event so that people have a lot of, a lot of things that they can do if they're not on a bicycle. And the community can participate. And it's not just all these bikes come in and they're here and then they go. We don't want that. We want it more of a community event.
It's a good idea.
I had a question about, excuse me, the $3,000 ask includes, one of the projects is to familiarize residents with our website assets in an effort to promote Trinidad. And one of those websites is trinadtrueoutdoors.com. And you try to sign on to that, which I tried to take a look at today. I got unsafe website, do not open, Safari cannot open the page because the address is invalid. Is that a Trinidad, City of Trinidad asset, that website?
That's already me 3,500. Both of you Trinidad assets.
Yes.
We'll look into that.
I think probably, I know Jared tried really hard to do a lot of things that department when he came on board, including building a website that had a lot, a lot of links and information. It's really a nice website and you get on there.
I've seen it before, but I don't know why it's doing that. But anyways, we'll have to check with him.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into that.
Well, you know, it sounds like with everything that you're promoting to try to do and one of the things that Jared wants to do is to, you know, one of the things that Jared wants to do is have this grand prix yearly event. So any, like I said, I think what you're trying to do and this group is trying to do is create all these additional activities. I think it would make us more ready for something like that. And the people will see that. Yeah, there's a lot more to do than just a bicycle event if we take, if we go there and take our families. So while we're out riding, they can do these other things. So I think it raises that bar for us.
We'll be involving Main Street lives to do some things and involving music. Just a lot of various things. So again, any ideas, if council has any, we're open to them.
Taste of Trinidad.
Taste of Trinidad, there you go. Yeah. We could make it regional if we wanted to too.
We want it all. We want it all.
Anything else on, on that line item?
Somebody has a question back there.
I was just offering, I think we could probably involve the Main Street Board and the Commons in that as well to pull some of that off of the street and indoors because it tends to be a little bit warm during that time of year. So Main Street Board would like to be involved in that as well.
All right, anything else? Okay, on to the PD ammunition. I understand the reason for that, but one thing that I was wondering about that, Steve, is shouldn't that be a line item that they should be familiar, yearly budget anyhow?
It should be. We have Captain Durbanovich here. Mr. Mayor, so we do have a budget for firearms and training equipment and stuff like that. It just, this year's purchase, we've got a little bit behind on purchasing ammunition. We've wrapped up our training for our officers. We've got some really good instructors now. And we're, we're trying out some, some better training and stuff, which requires us to, to shoot more ammunition for the drills and things that we're doing. So I would not mind if that was a line item, a budget increase for next year's thoughts, maybe. So that's the reason we use the marijuana money to start.
It sounds like that would be where you need to go for any budget on that line item.
I would hope we're, we're going to shoot for that, I hope, yeah.
So, and I don't know if you all remember, but when we were going through the budget for 2023, we knew that we were going to see a significant drop in our sales tax tied to the marijuana sales decrease. And so a lot of the things, even a lot of the things that the fire chief is requesting will probably go through these quarterly marijuana requests instead of being in the budget. So that's why you're seeing them here.
That makes sense.
Any other question, any other questions on the ammunition item? Okay, power light, T-Rex, Digger, Derek, truck down payment. And I think that was brought forward in our meeting the other night. It's obvious that that's something that we have to do to get this truck. And it sounds like that truck is available pretty readily anyway. Sounds like.
Well, that's just a down payment for the truck.
Yeah, it's going to be a five-year. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay, space crate, floor buffer. Uh, okay, space crate, floor buffer, um, likely in the floors, you know, in the, and it gets used for more than just one space, it's gonna be used for that space, but other spaces in the community as well, so, or in the city, city buildings, correct?
So...
It'll be a city asset, city asset.
Um, I, I've had a little experience with these, we have one at Evergreen, and, um, it's really, really hard on these to transport these from site to site. I mean, you end up, unless it's just driven, um, it ends up causing a lot of... What's that?
Just drive it from Main Street down.
The sidewalk.
That's gonna cause problems, too.
Okay.
But, I mean, how, what is the plan to transport it from one site to another, because it, it'll...
And that I don't know, that'd be a Bob question, but what I will say is, obviously, you've all been in the space crate before, there's huge, um, amount of space we're talking about, so primarily, it's gonna be used for that, and I think it would be a very rare thing where we would transport it somewhere else, so...
Yeah, I thought of that same thing when I was looking at the information, is to, you know, these things are big and bulky, and...
Yeah.
They're not made, uh...
Yeah.
I, I'm really for the idea of using it, but I would say, leave it in that building at all costs.
I think that's mostly what you're gonna see.
Okay.
Okay, and then we have boards and commissions, Main Street Board for fifteen thousand. What's that line item?
And Mayor, we have Christopher Franks here, um, who can speak on that, any questions, anyone has, and, and just wanted to point out, um, we, we didn't include Main Street in the third quarterly marijuana request last year, which is normally where we'd see boards and commissions, that's why it's coming as a fourth quarter, so this is kind of a one-off, we won't typically see boards and commission requests in anything but third quarter.
So, does that make this a quarterly amount, or a yearly amount?
This would be your, your yearly amount.
Has to be.
Would you like me to speak on that? Would you like to ask questions? How would you like this to go?
Yeah, how do you use the money?
So, we're in a really, you can hear me from all over the room. We're in a really interesting place with the Main Street Board, because we do have a new president, that'd be myself, I'm Christopher Franks, um, with the Main Street Board, and also a Main Street business owner, so if we haven't met, hello. Uh, we're in a really interesting place, because we're in this sort of reset, this sort of move to the new level when it comes to Main Street. We've traditionally, um, had a little different budget, had a little different setup as far as personnel, and we have had some conversations with DOLA, they were just here in town with the Fox Theater, which is where my business is located, so there's these conversations that have been happening, and we're asked, uh, to improve and refocus the Main Street Board, and so, when you got our budget, uh, this, that we presented, uh, I believe last month, uh, or at the beginning of the month, all of that was to refocus and to rebrand, so there's some things in that budget talking about rebranding and marketing, because there's a lot of people in town that don't know what the Main Street Board is, and I was one of those. So, I think it's really important that we begin to communicate, that we begin to have a presence at things like the Rad, that we have a booth where people can ask those questions, where they can see what we're doing and understand what it is, because again, there's some real unclarity, uh, unclear items, um, everyone knows about pianos, everyone knows about the benches, but really, what's the meat and potatoes of what we're trying to do? And as a new board, and sort of a new direction of that, we want to stick very closely to what DOLA and the Main Street Board parameters are set for us. Uh, we have specific goals in mind, um, and those are dictated, dictated by DOLA and by our Main Street charters, so, um, or, excuse me. That includes, yes, beautification, and yes, partnering with businesses, and yes, beginning to talk about things like parking and visiting, we, uh, I think we spoke last week, this week, I'm confused on what day it is, because it's my weekend, um, last week, we talked about, uh, going and visiting other cities and understanding how the creative boards and the Main Street Boards are working together, as an example, um, so we'll have a little bit of that over the next few months, as we begin to rebuild and refocus. Um, so, our items, um, if you're, I don't know if you have the full sheet, or if it's just, um, an overview, but what we had submitted talked about, um, we have the Fourth of July Project, which has traditionally been our project, um, that is in that as well. Restore Trinidad is sort of what we're working on as a board when it comes to refocusing, listing our goals, what our mission statements are, all of those things are kind of on our plate right now to redo, um, and bring in new members, so we want to sort of get our ducks in a row before we bring new people on and understand where, what direction we're going. So, the Restore Trinidad Project is partnering with a business, um, to attain federal historic status, we have, um, we've talked about this in a couple of different arrangements, but basically, Main Street needs to focus on Main Street, and how we make that walkable, how we make that accessible to people that are coming in town, obviously, we've talked about that more than once today, but when it comes to the Main Street Board, um, we're doing collaborations with Historic Society, if we end up taking on creative districts, that also will adjust some of those goals, so we're a little bit in a limbo when it comes to some of those things. We have the Holiday Shop Local with the Chamber, which we would like to be a much more intricate part of this year, traditionally, that's sort of been a Chamber event, but I think we as Main Street have a little bit to offer with that as well. Um, so, it's, it looks a little bit different, um, but that's because we're doing things differently than we have been doing them in the past. Um, we've been tasked with that, and we also think it's important to kind of refocus now. We have Margie, uh, we have a staff person, and so, in order for us to reach, uh, a different allocation, what's our word, not bona fide, that's what I say, but, um...
Right now, we are, um, we want to get designated as our next.
Yes, that's our next title we want to get to, and so, we have some goals to meet, to get us to that point, um, that's been a bit loosey-goosey over the last, um, versions of Main Street. So, um, I have this, but we don't have to pass it around, because it's got all my writing on it, but that's what our budget is talking about. Yes, ma'am?
Christopher, does, um, DOLA provide you any direct funding?
We have to apply for grants. Uh, right now, we have a grant that was written in 2018 that we need to use by 2025, and it's twelve thousand five hundred dollars, and then the city matches twenty-five percent, which is about three thousand some odd dollars. We haven't decided what we want to do with that yet, but we want to do it sooner than later.
And I really think it's important for Main Street to not seek city funding exclusively. I think there has to be outreach, I think there has to be work, uh, I'm a poor white kid, I'm used to being scrappy and making the money work, and I think this is a really good opportunity for us to put our passion behind it and not be passive when it comes to what we're receiving and how we spend that. So, um, yeah, it, that's part of the, what we're supposed to do as the Main Street Board, and so, after, uh, we get our feet under us a little bit, and we figure out what our membership looks like, what our money looks like, then I want to really, as a board, um, again, learn from cities around us, but also not just, uh, rely on the city for money. I think that's really important, um, for us to, again, work very hard for it, to follow the examples, and DOLA has offered us, um, guidance and templates, so we have these things, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we can really stand on the resources that we already have to us.
You mentioned that you have members?
We do have members.
I mean, businesses? How many do you have right now? I mean, are you working on recruiting? Do you, how, how many?
Are we talking about the Restore Trinidad Project?
Yeah, well, whatever you have on a Main Street project, I'm not sure how you have it separated, but...
Uh, I'm not, also not completely sure of how we have it separated, we have done things a little differently in the past, um, and our new focus is then to include the businesses and have conversation with businesses, not just physically make Main Street look a little nicer, though that is still a part of our tier.
Do you meet with them?
I have been, yes.
It's not a Chamber of Commerce setup.
Well, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, it's not a Chamber of Commerce setup where, where businesses join, it's from the state and comes down of like how to revitalize historic areas of commerce.
She's clearly a member, clearly.
Yeah. Well, she did her homework, because she gave...
Um, and what, I, I know that Main Street Board has the entire Main Street as our focus, but we also are very cognizant of the fact that that is built by individual businesses and their needs and what they're looking for, and so, I've already started asking questions about parking, and what are your challenges, and how can we as a board support that, um, so that we speak not just on behalf of what we believe and what we think is right, but also our businesses.
But you're talking about the whole town, right?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yes, not just Main Street businesses, I'm sorry.
But we have commercial and everything else, sounds...
Certainly, and I, it, it means everything, we're just called Main Street, so I don't have to seem like we're, um, stepping out of our lane.
It's a, it's like a private city collaboration. Well, there's the Historic Main Street District that encompasses, I don't know how many miles, but half Cedar, over down towards Nanana.
More than six blocks, though.
Yeah.
I, I don't know who this question may be addressed to, maybe Steve, uh, Lester? Uh, no, I'm not sure, but, um, and not just for the Main Street Board, but any board in general, um, how, how are any boards that have a budget money, how are those monies overseen by the city? Are they audited to any level, and is there a predictable...
Yeah, Councilman Williams, and typically, what happens is the staff liaison for the board is the one who's gonna be spending it and working with the board, so it all goes through city process, our procurement, everything, and it hits our books, so it, it doesn't go into like a separate bank account for the, the boards, it all goes through our, our financial accounting, and then it's subject to our annual audit.
So, it, it does, it is overseen by the annual audit?
Yeah, so, for example, uh, I can just give you a quick example, when we did, um, when the Parks and Rec Board requested money for bear-proof trash cans at the wormhole, that's something city staff ultimately did, and it went through a purchase order from the city, and so, it all, it all is city staff spending the money.
Any other questions on that item? Thank you, Chris.
Just to be clear, if this, this board did not have city staff or until Margie stepped in this, correct?
Right, yeah, I'm just saying, as far as spending goes, that happens if the city staff, what will...
Okay, uh, the only other thing, well, of course, that amount, there's two hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars, and then we have a four percent incentives, which is fourteen thousand three ninety-one, um, then we have the nonprofits of thirty-five, three thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars, and then the rainy day fund of thirty percent of a hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars, which makes up the total for that five oh nine seven sixty, so, uh, we still continue to be able to have money to do what we need to do, and still allow for a lot of these projects that are brought forward on a quarterly basis, so we're, we're fortunate in, in that regard, so, uh, any other questions at this point in time? I was gonna say, uh, you know, kind of which ends that, typically, I ask if there's any other, are there any other items that council wants to bring forward in future work sessions, and I think we covered a lot of that over the, on Friday, so...
Yeah. I, I have one, okay, and it, it may not be appropriate for a work session, or, or even necessary for a work session, but, um, I've actually been approached by several constituents, and, um, and we have actually spoken on it too, but I think it would be a good idea if we all have a collective opinion, um, on the vodka and Blue House, and what's going on with that, I mean, um, I've seen pictures of the interior of it now, and it's a, it's a travesty.
Well, and yeah, and answer is, you know, suppose a few months back, I got a letter from a lady that comes through, and actually, she contributed her money, and I read that to you guys.
Right.
And then I got another letter from Devon and Farland, and I'm not sure if it was upon our request or whatever, but State Historical is here as...
They're coming on the eighth, or, actually, no, sorry, this Thursday.
Do you know what time that is?
I think two thirty, but we'll get that information out to council, but on the agenda for their visit is to talk to them about the history museum.
Yeah, because it's, you're right, it's horrible, the last time I was in it, it's...
Yeah, and if, if we're really wanting to become a tourist spot, that's just a gem of a, or was a gem of a place, and now it's a...
Well, does anybody know really what happened there? I mean, at one time, that was really kept good, they had gardeners in there, is it because they didn't staff it right?
We reached out to them last March.
All the stuff is gone.
I know, that's what I said, something's really, it was really a nice place, and they had gardeners, they had directors, do they even have a director there that takes care of that?
They have employees, I know that.
I mean, let's just hope like the stuff wasn't sold to private agencies.
Well, what happened is that when that roof got deteriorated several years ago, they took all of that furniture and stuff, and it's stored somewhere up in Devon, from what I understand.
Wow.
So, hopefully, that we can get it pushed enough that maybe they'll put some money forth to restore the roof, or if that's necessary in other areas, so that we can get that furniture back down here, because like I said, it's a gem, and I think that we need to try to...
Is there anybody that's exactly in charge of those two things? Because there used to be, Kirby Stokes, yes, he was doing this excellent, did the state replace her?
I think Al Melton runs, I think there's a, um, there...
Who?
Al Melton, M-E-L-T-O-N.
I talked with Al, and he said that, basically, during COVID, they kind of all shut down from the state level, and so, the staff wise, most of their staff left, and then on top of that, all of that stuff has to be listed from the state, so Trinidad, the city of Trinidad wants to get involved, they need to talk to the state.
And I think that's what we can do on Thursday.
Yeah, that's what the plan is for Thursday.
We can talk to them, and we can push them into, try to do something, so that's at two thirty, and that's gonna be at the Blue Mansion on, on opening, so, maybe we'll see what's going on. Anything else?
No one's...
Okay, well, the work session, I can ask Jared, what time is it?
I was gonna sing a song for him.
Definitely, yeah.